Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the room?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blatt?
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation, which will be offered by President Ross Hugues representing the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our beloved Father in heaven, we come before this evening to thank thee for the opportunity to be here at this city council meeting. We are thankful, Father, for this wonderful country in which we have to live and for the freedoms that we have to enjoy. We're thankful for the great city of Pocatello and for the great place it is to live, and we're thankful for the many, many good people that it contains. We're thankful, Father, for our civic leaders and for all they do to help it to remain that way, to be such a wonderful place for families to be raised and for freedoms to be enjoyed. We would ask, Father, this evening at this meeting, that a spirit of open communication might pervade, that the ideas and the subjects that need to be spoken of may be done in a way that would be edifying and that the purposes which are best for this wonderful city will be brought to pass. We love thee, Father, and we ask these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: January 14, 2021, work session and clarification in regular city council meetings; February 18, 2021; and March 4, 2021. B, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the month of March 2021. Jim?
As included in the report that I gave to the city council, the city spent $2,794,761 on material claims, which included claims and procurement card purchases. That's approximately $828,000 more than what was spent in the prior fiscal year, March of last fiscal year. Most of the change between the two years relates to ongoing expenditures and unusual and extraordinary expenditures. In the unusual and extraordinary category, there were some improvements that were made at the airport, about $308,000. There were two side loader trucks purchased for the sanitation fund, about $318,000. And that's the extent of the report that I'm giving tonight. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions from the city council.
Any questions, council?
This really goes back to a comment that Tom made last year during budgeting. Tom, you had talked about perhaps us wanting to consider doing some consolidated purchasing. And I'm just wondering if anybody knows if we've done anything with that or if it's going to come up during budgeting or...
Yeah, so actually, we have a procurement person who's been handling the majority of the vehicle purchases, and we're trying to get those standardized. I think, are you talking about potentially like a storehouse?
Right, you had talked about, I mean, that we were doing some consolidated purchasing around COVID supplies. And that it seemed as though that might be a good idea. And I, because I know I've been out at Lowe's or Home Depot and seen two city trucks parked there, you know, and I realize that that's not, you know, proof of anything, but it just makes me think, golly, the school district, for example, and most school districts have gone away from, you know, try to curb P-cards and do consolidated purchasing for the savings. So it's not, I know it's not really on your shoulders, I just don't know who else to put the question to.
Yeah, that's something that we were going to discuss with the folks during the budget season.
Okay.
And also here really warrants a study session presentation. It's something we could just discuss really quick.
Okay.
And so that was kind of what we were shooting for.
Great.
If you're okay with that.
Yep, I'm fine with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jim? All right, thank you, Jim. C, community development block grant advisory committee appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Heather Diselcon to serve as a member of the CDBG advisory committee, replacing Matthias Edrich, who resigned. Heather's term will begin April 2, 2021, and will expire January 1, 2023. D, council decision short plaid cream top subdivision. Council may wish to adopt its decision approving a short plaid for cream top subdivision, which divides approximately 2.56 acres of land located in the 400 block of Frederick Hill Road into four lots subject to conditions. Councilman Cheatham?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of agenda item number three, the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick.
Yeah, I have a question. Heather contacted me because she, and she asked me whether or not, because she saw this and she said, "Nobody's communicated with me." Is that typical?
That's typical. She filled out the application, we'll appoint, and then we'll get in touch with her so that she knows that she's been appointed.
Okay, so what would happen if she were no, I mean, I'm not saying she isn't, but I mean, what?
If she is not interested, she would need to send us a letter of resignation and we would put it out for application again. So her application was a new application and it was fresh, so we assume that when you fill out application, that means you want to be a part of that, and we don't reach out and say, "Hey, are you sure you really want to be a part of this?"
Well, no, but...
If the application is a few months old, then we usually reach out and say, "Hey, we're considering appointing. Are you interested still?"
Well, she had just said, you know, "I'm confused," and I didn't have an answer. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, if it was, if it were a few months old, we would have reached out, but this was a new application. But we'd be very interested. If she's not interested in serving, then we'll just, at this point, she'll need to just send us a letter of resignation.
Yeah, and I'm not indicating that. She was just like, "This is kind of weird. I've never been appointed to anything without anybody checking to make sure that my life circumstances still allowed me to be available." So that's, and I said, "I had no idea."
I think that her application was within a week or two old when we appointed, so. With that, we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the room?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, proclamation. We have a proclamation for National Community Development Week, and the proclamation will be read by Councilwoman Ortega.
So proclamation, whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program in 1974, for the purpose of providing local governments with the financial resources to assist low and moderate income persons, and whereas the week of April 5 through 9, 2021, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities like the city of Pocatello to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, to eliminate slum and blight, and to provide economic opportunities to low and moderate income people, and whereas the CDBG program has made a significant impact on our community through the provision of housing rehabilitation funds, the installation of new sidewalks, and other infrastructure, and the financial support to community nonprofit organizations, and whereas the CDBG program has assisted in the development of over 100 new homes in Pocatello that have added over $9.2 million to the local property tax base, and whereas the city of Pocatello is celebrating its 25th year of being a CDBG entitlement community, during which the city of Pocatello has received more than $12.5 million in CDBG funding, and now therefore Brian C. Blatt, mayor of the city of Pocatello, does hereby proclaim the week of April 5 through 9, 2021, to be National Community Development Week in Pocatello, and urges all citizens to support community development activities throughout the year.
Thank you. And I, I might just say that Christine's been with the city of Pocatello a matter of a week.
A little less than a week.
A little less than a week, and so thank you very much. That's a phrase that's been made. Pretty fast, and if you'd like to say a few words, if you'd step over here, if not, then that'd be okay too, but we get to hear from Christine on, I don't know, three or four different public hearings tonight, so we'll get to know her good.
Thank you, members of the council and mayor for issuing the proclamation. As was stated, the CDBG program has been within the city for the last 25 years and has provided great benefit, especially to our low to moderate income residents, so we appreciate the proclamation and look forward to continuing the great work through the program with your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On April 8, 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. April 15, city council liaison work session clarification meeting has been canceled. April 15, 2:00 p.m., special city council meeting for the city council to receive training from the state attorney general's office. April 15, 5:30 p.m., clarification meeting. April 15, 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. Other events, annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries will continue through the end of April. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, etc. They have placed out the cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Zoo Idaho opens for 2021 season on April 3. Compost happens. Yard waste only composting program begins April 6 and continues through the last week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up on the same day as the regular collection day. For more information, please contact the sanitation department. Face coverings are required when individuals are in public places within the city of Pocatello. It's nice to have a little bit of music to finish that off.
Sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stevens, for providing the ambience there.
Yeah, I don't know why they have an alarm set for this moment in time, so I apologize. It's actually on silent, but apparently it doesn't affect the alarm. And I knew you respond well to music.
That's so, it was wonderful. It was great to have. Thank you. All right, we'll move to agenda item six, public hearing, community development block grant, CDBG program year 2020 action plan amendment, citizens' participation plan. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding a proposed amendment within the program year 2020, community development block grant, CDBG annual action plan. The CDBG advisory committee recommended approval of the amendment at a special meeting on February 19, 2021. A 30-day written comment period on this amendment began March 2, 2021, and concludes with the oral comments opportunity at the city council meeting on April 1, 2021. Following the public hearing, council may wish to approve the amendment and authorize submission, including any public comments to HUD. I declare the public hearing open. Christine?
Good evening again, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Christine Howe, and I'm the CDBG program coordinator. As was described by the mayor, this is the oral comment opportunity for an amendment to the program year 2020 action plan. This amendment would officially adopt our citizen participation plan, which guides our citizen engagement and ensures openness and transparency in the actions completed under the CDBG program. This plan is mandated by HUD, and the citizen participation plan would guide our CDBG actions until the end of our current plan year, as well as next year's plan year, which ends April 1, 2022. The CDBG advisory committee did recommend this plan as an amendment at their February 19, 2021 special committee meeting. Copies of this recommendation were available at a number of locations, including the Marshall Library, Neighbor Works Pocatello Life, Inc., the Housing Authority, and at City Hall, as well as on the website for interested parties to review. We did not receive any written comments. So following tonight's hearing, the council may wish to accept the committee's recommendation and authorize this amendment to be submitted to HUD. That completes my participation. If anyone has any questions.
Questions, council? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
You said, Christine, you said there was no written comments that you had received in your office?
Correct. We had the plan publicly posted and allowed for the mandated comment period, but did not receive any.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, we would entertain any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, Christine, it doesn't look like you have anything to argue about, and so I'm just going to skip the rebuttal part. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you how do you wish to proceed. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the CDG, CDGG action plan amendment for citizen participation.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the room?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item seven, public hearing, community development block grant, CDBG program year 2020 action plan amendment, public facilities improvement budget. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding one proposed amendment within the program year 2020, CDBG annual action plan. The CDBG advisory committee recommended approval of the amendments at a special meeting on February 19, 2021. A 30-day written comment period on this amendment began on March 2, 2021, and concludes with the oral comment opportunity at the city council meeting on April 1, 2021. Following the public hearing, the council may wish to approve the amendment and submission, including any public comment to HUD. I declare the public hearing open. Christine?
Good evening again, council, Mr. Mayor. Christine Howe, CDBG program coordinator. This amendment request is the hearing for the oral comment period related to an amendment to our program year 2020 action plan. So this amendment increases the public facilities improvement budget for the CDBG program by $58,176. This is being allocated from our uncommitted program year 2020 funds. Currently, the public facilities budget is $98,400, so this increase would bring it up to $156,576, leaving the balance of the uncommitted funds to just under $285. And the increase is more than 25%, so we have to go through the public hearing process for the budget. The reason for the request is to allow for a recently approved project to move forward for Family Services Alliance. They're a local nonprofit that we work with, and they serve victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and human trafficking. So this project is to fix some foundation issues on their main office building, remediating cracks and settling issues that have led to issues within the building, so they'd still be able to serve the low to moderate income population. Some other similar activities that we've completed with the public facilities improvements include new roofs at the Sixth District Judicial CASA program, electrical and HVAC upgrades to the Bannock Youth Foundation, and repayment of funds to the IHFA for New Aid for Friends Homeless Shelter. So again, the advisory committee recommended approval of this amendment at their February 19, 2021 meeting. We had the copies of the amendment posted in the requisite locations, and so the 30-day comment period began and concluded with no written comments being received related to the amendment. So if the council adopts the funding request, we'll submit that to HUD as well.
Any questions for Christine? Thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any comments in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. With that, then, I would look for any testimony supporting the application.
My name is Sarah Obanion, and I serve as the executive director of Family Services Alliance of Southeast Idaho. We're located at 355 South Arthur, and I'm here to let you all know that we are hoping to be able to move forward with this project, and so we definitely are in support of moving forward with this adjustment and being able to fix this pretty serious issue at our building so that we can continue to serve individuals that have been affected by violence. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other testimony supporting the application, any uncommitted to the application, any opposed to the application? With that, I don't know if Christine wants to argue with herself or not, but I'm going to go ahead. I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Ortega?
I move that we approve agenda item seven, the CDBG program year action plan amendment, public facilities improvement budget.
We have a motion by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the room?
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. It's the CDBG tonight, so agenda item eight. We'll move to the public hearing, community block grant, program year 2021 action plan amendment, housing rehabilitation budget. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public regarding a proposed amendment with the program year 2021 CDBG annual action plan. The CDG, CDBG advisory committee recommended approval of the amendment at the special meeting on February 19, 2021. A 30-day written comment period on this amendment began on March 2, 2021, and concludes with the oral comment opportunity at the city council meeting of April 1, 2021. Following a public hearing, the council may wish to approve the amendment and authorize submission, including any public comments to HUD. I declare the public hearing open. Christine?
Mr. Mayor, council, last amendment tonight. Everyone's going to get the CDBG acronym correct after this, I believe. So this amendment is to our program year 2021 housing rehab budget. It would increase it by $60,000. Again, this exceeds the threshold, so we have the public hearing. The current housing rehab budget is $25,000, so this would come out of our uncommitted funds, which have a current balance of just over $102,000, so the remaining uncommitted would still be just over $42,000. This increase is for an application submitted by Neighbor Works Pocatello, which is a local housing and community development nonprofit, and with this funding, they would operate a mobile home repair program for our low to moderate income residents, and they would provide qualified homeowners with small grants and the options to access a low-interest loan to make repairs that can't be covered with the grant funds. So this is crucial to mobile homeowners who don't have many financing options available. The CDBG advisory committee did approve of this amendment at their February 19 meeting. The copies have been posted in the required public locations, and we will submit an authorized amendment to HUD if the council votes in favor tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for Christine? Councilman Cheatham?
I have one sentence that I find a little confusing. It says, "This program provides qualified mobile homeowners with a small grant and the option to access a low-interest loan to make repairs that can't be covered with the grant funds." So the money's all coming out of the grant anyway? It's just some's granted and some's loaned?
Yes, some will be direct grants and some will be loans. The total budget is $60,000, with $15,000 going toward the administrative aspects of the program, and then $45,000 available for the repairs and the loans for the repairs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we receive any written comments, Christine?
We did not.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In the clerk's office, have we received any?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. And I'd look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then, I don't, there again, Christine doesn't want to argue with herself probably, so I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number eight, the community block grant program year 21 action plan amendment regarding housing rehabilitation budget.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the room?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, we'll move to agenda item nine, is a public hearing, appeal of hearing examiner's exception decision. Lookout Credit Union, 275 South Fifth Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to accept comments from the public concerning an appeal of a hearing examiner's decision to deny a request by Lookout Credit Union, represented by Yescop, for a sign exception to install a 222.6 square foot wall sign on a professional office building where individual business signage is not permitted. The Omni Building is located at 275 South Fifth Avenue. I declare the public hearing open. I need, who would like to speak on behalf of Lookout Credit Union? You'll have 10 minutes, and this clock will start going when you're down to three.
Okay, sounds good. Do I need to wear this? It fogges up my glasses.
Go ahead and take it off so you can speak if you need to.
Okay, makes it easier for me to read. Thank you. All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, do I need to state my name? I'm David with Yescop. I reside at 1347 Jenna in Chubak, Idaho. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we would like to thank you for this opportunity to hear our request to appeal the decision made by the hearing examiner for the sign exception application of the property located at 275 South Fifth Avenue in Pocatello, Idaho. We have read the staff analysis and wish to address some of their thoughts. In the staff analysis, one of the sections there, we read that there have been five exceptions that have been made or that have been permitted on the subject property, all of which could have been avoided had the property owner provided signage that met the standards in the Pocatello sign code. The staff analysis goes on, but this is the main premise of their thoughts on this section. Although I do agree with the analysis that this could have been and should have been addressed approximately 15 years ago with the very first exception request, the one very large point that needs to be made and understood is that Lookout Credit Union only recently took ownership of the building and had no influence on the history of the sign situation for this property. The fact that the city council has allowed all these exceptions has only added frustration to the current situation. There have been signs on the building in the same location as what we are proposing. It's unfortunate that some other sign companies have failed to obtain permits for these signs in the past, but I would like to reference that, to my knowledge, there have been no concerns or complaints with the previous signs located on the building. Some of those signs were larger, and some of them were smaller than what we are proposing. I would hope that the council understands that as we are going through the proper process to obtain permits, that we do respect and honor the rules and regulations set forth by the city. Section C of the staff analysis says that the applicant has reasonable use of the property without the sign exception. Now, I'm going to be honest, I'm a little confused by this comment. I'm not sure how to interpret it. The client does, in fact, use the property, and I believe that they use it well, but I'm not sure that that should disqualify them from having signage to identify who they are and where they're located. I have visited with other tenants in the building. They have also expressed some frustration when trying to direct their clients to the building, often having to refer them to other buildings nearby, something like, "Do you know where Ace Hardware is?" or the big brown building across the street from them. The comment was also made that there is an unused sign on the back of the building. This is correct. The sign is currently unused, but it's on the back of the building, and it offers no visibility to clients entering the parking lot. As for the size of the proposed sign, the building itself is approximately 32 feet tall and 170 feet wide. That's on one face of the building. That's 5,440 square feet of building frontage. The proposed sign is only 4.1% of that total. I actually have a couple of handouts. I don't know if that's okay, if I pass some of these around?
Sure, if you just hand them to Councilman Cheatham, and he'll just hand them around, and we'll get them.
I printed off five of each, so I'm not sure how many need to go around, but there's five of those, and then there's five of each of those pictures there, too, so. So as for the actual square footage, it's listed at 222 square feet. As these come around, you'll see that that's only when you draw a box around the entire sign area of the proposed signs. If you actually measure just each set of letters and the logo that's going on the building, that equates to only 148 total square feet of signage going on the building. Or 2.7% of the total facial... Or 2.7% of the total facial on that building. I would also like to point out the property directly south of Lookout Credit Union, Varsity Square, that's one of the pictures that I provided. They were approved for sign exceptions. I've provided photos for the multi-tenant signs there. That sign is 140 square feet. And they have two of those signs. One of those signs is on South Fourth, and one of them is on South Fifth. I've also provided photos of the Advantage Building up on Center Street. That sign is over 120 square feet, and they were also approved for a sign exception. There are plenty of other examples around town of buildings that have been granted exceptions. I won't waste the council's time by going through all of them, but just know that there are other signs that have been approved out there. Needless to say, without an exception, there is currently no way for Lookout Credit Union to be recognized in their own building. The code would allow for a 32-square-foot directional... Sorry, directory sign to be placed next to the front door that would just list all the tenants in the building. But this would offer no street visibility as the building sits over 150 feet off of the road. So once again, thank you for your time this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions? Is there a chance for him before we...
Davidson? I probably do, but I don't know if I should tell.
Well, we can wait until after staff, and then we can go from there. Thank you. Don't go far.
Okay.
We'd look for staff. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Anglesley, Senior Planner for the City of Pocatello. As stated, Lookout Credit Union has submitted an appeal to City Council regarding the hearing examiner's decision denying their request to install a 222.6-square-foot wall sign on the Omni Building, which is a professional office building where individual business signage is not permitted. The subject property is approximately 2.07 acres of land in its own commercial general and is developed with a professional office building as well as parking facilities. The property takes up an entire city block with its main entrance facing South Fifth Avenue. Professional office buildings are defined in the city sign code as a structure designed for professional offices rather than commercial space. Such buildings generally have more than one floor and have shared entrances for their clientele. Because of the nature of such buildings, they are only permitted to have the following types of signage. One directory-type ground sign shall be permitted per street frontage for building identification and/or collective listing of all tenants who have offices or businesses on a common site. This sign shall not exceed 64 square feet and shall not exceed eight feet in height. One directory wall sign listing all tenants and office businesses within the premise shall be permitted up to 32 square feet in size near each main entrance to serve pedestrians. And a wall-mounted sign signifying the building itself may be allowed on each side of a structure with an allowable square footage of half-square-foot per each linear building frontage. The applicant has reasonable use of the property without the sign exception, and there are no unique physical characteristics of the site in question. The proposed signage far exceeds the maximum square footage permitted on allowed sign types for a professional office building. There have been five sign exceptions that have been permitted on the subject property, all of which could have been avoided had the previous property owner provided signage that met the standards listed in Pocatello Sign Code 1520-220. This could have been... This could have provided signage for all businesses and offices on all four frontages of the subject property and at the main entrances of the building without any exceptions. The 2015 Pocatello Comprehensive Plan directs us to protect and enhance scenic views and natural landscapes by avoiding visual clutter created by excessive signage. Additionally, the Comprehensive Plan also directs that we should encourage the avoidance of signage that dominates a building or site and encourages signs that are of an appropriate height and scale for its purpose. Notice for this public hearing was mailed to all adjacent property owners of the subject property on March 16, 2021. And to date, there have been no public comments received by staff regarding this appeal. In consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed sign exception is not compliant with Pocatello Municipal Code, Section 1520-270. This concludes my staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? We got Linda, then Roger.
Maybe.
Okay, we'll see what...
Depending on what they ask.
We might have a couple.
And maybe you haven't seen this picture, but I'm just looking at this kind of directory sign. So it's got the name of the building or property, but then all the businesses that are in that. So I guess what I'm going to ask is... And you talked about one way that they could address this would be to rename the building. Can they rename the building? I mean, the sign as proposed is still larger than we allow, even in that situation. But if we could work that out, just put that aside for now. But could... Can they do both? A directory-type sign as well as, you know, rename the building and then have a name on the building? Can they have both of those things together?
They're allowed both, yep.
Okay. And was there an interest in doing a directory-type sign?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And maybe we can ask you that in a second. Okay.
Okay.
I think that's it.
All right, Roger.
You said we contacted all the property owners around the building. Have any of the tenants had a say in this? Because it looks like they could be overshadowed or something like that. You know, am I going to be working for Social Security in the Lookout Credit Union? I don't know where Social Security or IRS or somebody used to be there.
Yep. For public hearing, we're required to have adjacent property owners be noticed.
But not tenants.
Not that I'm aware of.
Did that spare any questions?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question. If they were to rename the building, looking at this example that they've provided to us, what would be the scale that would have to be shrunk down? Like, are we talking half? Are we talking a quarter?
It goes by formula. So it's half-a-square-foot for each linear foot of building frontage. And so that's linear. So I believe it's 170 feet linear. And so we're looking around 70 square feet or so, give or take. So it'd be shrunk down.
Okay, so we're talking from this corner to this corner. Is, what did you say, 170?
The entire building, linear building frontage, is 170, give or take.
85 square feet.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a feel for what that would look like.
About the third square footage that that sign represents.
Which would be closer to what the ISU Credit Union sign is that's already there?
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the process in renaming the building? And what is the... Is there a fee, a cost, or what?
It goes through the typical sign permit process. And so we receive that and review it to make sure that it adheres to that allowable square footage. And there's a sign permit fee of $75.
To rename the building?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Chris?
Yeah. Why does the lookout sign need to be larger than the ISU?
The ISU sign is currently not there. There's nothing in that spot.
Okay. Would a sign the size of the... Because it says... I'm sorry, I was confused because it says existing condition.
That design was put together many, many months ago when we were first exploring the...
Got it. Okay. So why would signage of that scale not... Why would that no longer be acceptable?
Do I need to approach the macro?
Yeah, please, Jim, use upside. David, if you would, please.
So it's a question that I haven't been asked, but obviously, the previous ISU Credit Union was only three letters long. I believe the size of the letters aren't... Of the new proposed sign aren't any bigger. There's just more of them.
This is the new-old Credit Union, right?
Correct.
So what... And I don't know. What would... Lookout owns this building.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So what would prevent other tenants from wanting to do the same thing?
I would say, first and foremost, Lookout Credit Union owns the building, and they probably wouldn't want other people to do that.
Right. So you would just prohibit that?
I would assume, yes.
But that could change.
And it's apparently in their contracts that they're not allowed to do that.
So when you talk to the... Somebody talked to the tenants, right? Was that you, sir?
Yeah.
So when you talk to the tenants, are they in favor of this because it would make it easier to give people directions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you be willing to make it half as big?
I mean, we're open to, you know, I guess, that possibility, but...
I mean, I know you want what you want.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Everybody wants what they want.
That's what we're inclined for today.
But I'm just asking, would you be willing to consider halving it?
Yeah.
Which is still bigger than the ISU sign.
I'm sure that could be a possibility, yes.
Yeah. Along those same lines, I would feel better about that as well just because of the part in our code that says it shouldn't dominate a building and it needs to be the appropriate size and scale. It does seem like it will be quite dominating. And if we shrunk it down a little bit, I would feel...
Yeah, so I'll take the blame on part of that because you're only seeing half the building in that photo right there.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the building, but I still feel like... I still feel like it's large, on the larger side, but...
That's one, Lurk.
And I echo those sentiments if it could be smaller. But and I would ask, you know, not only are you open to having the building sign be smaller, but are you interested in doing what I had asked Jim, where you would have the sign on the building a little bit smaller? Or, you know, and renaming the building and having the directory sign?
Like a multi-tenant sign. So that's one of the challenges that we have is because there was a sign exception provided to the previous building owners. And so there's already a freestanding sign out front. So that would not be allowed unless we tore that sign down and put something new up, which I'm sure that would upset whoever was granted that exception.
So that was granted to one of the tenants?
Yes. Years and years ago.
So a tenant has a sign?
I think that there was... If I remember right, you said there were five exceptions on this building alone. And so it sounds like you've got an exception in front out on the road, if I remember the building. You have a sign out at front for a tenant. That tenant also has a sign on the building itself. And in the back of it, you have another sign that was an exception to the thing. There is a freestanding sign. And I believe that was also on the building. However, that tenant is no longer there, so I think that sign's empty.
Yeah, that's the sign that's currently empty right now, but it's on the backside of the building, yes.
And then you have the other sign that is called the Omni Building there. And I mean, this building is full of exceptions, and it sounds to me like Lookout Credit Union is trying to clean all of that up, make it Lookout Credit Union and the Omni Building. But it's the... They want to be able to have their brand on it, which makes sense to me. And then they can deal with the signs for all the tenants and stuff like that, so...
So with those others... With the sign, the empty sign on the back, would those other signs come down? Or that sign come down?
It's not part of our proposal to tear anything down right now.
So then that means what? If it's not coming down, then it would be...
So currently, it's a...
Potentially used again in the future?
Yeah, currently, it's a freestanding sign that has no tenant there. So someone that moves into that space could potentially just put their name on that sign that's on the back of the building.
I mean, the dilemma for me is that, you know, as Pocatello tries to compete as a community, an attractive community with all the other attractive communities in the country for economic development, in some communities, you know, there are... Comprehensive plans are adhered to because they were developed with, you know, after study and for a reason. And, you know, without casting aspersions on any business, Yellowstone, for example, is hardly and, you know, a breathtaking approach to our city. And I'm concerned about dominating. I mean, there's that sign that counsel made an exception by the spa, that horrific, huge sign that makes somebody money, but it did not improve the aesthetics of the situation. And I'm just concerned that as we keep making these exceptions, each one has a rationale, but in the aggregate, we turn our... Continue to turn our town into, you know, a neon jungle. And I'm not sure that that is going to serve some of the ideals.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that. And if I could speak to that for just a second. If we were applying for like a 40-foot-tall If we were applying for like a 40-foot-tall, giant digital display that rotated and blinked, I could see the adverse to that, but this is just a set of letters on the building that I think helps enhance the building myself. It provides visibility for people to see where they're going and where they need to turn into, so.
But when you look at it at night, it's very dominating, very, to my eye. Particularly, I mean, it is anyway, even, even in the daylight view, but at night, you know, then it's, so I, I would be much more inclined if it were, if it were not so dominating.
So Linda, then Rick.
I just wanted to go back to the idea of renaming for a minute, or is Lookout Credit Union interested in renaming the building?
I'm sure that would be like a last resort. I don't think that would be their first preference right now.
Okay. And, and maybe this is more for Jim, but what would be the benefit for renaming? What would that allow them to do? Can you clarify that as far as the sign on the building?
If they rename the building, they'd be, they'd be allowed to put that sign on each frontage, so there's four frontages of the building.
Okay. But they could do this as proposed if it were smaller?
Right.
Without renaming? But if they renamed them, they can put on every side?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I just want to understand the options. Thank you.
Okay, we got Rick, and then we got Roger, then Claudia.
You know, when I, when I look at this logo layout, you reduce that by a third, I'm not sure you'll even be able to see it from fifth. It's a, it's a horizontal layout logo, and you take a third of that away, and you've got nothing left that's going to show. It's not going to, it's not going to do what, what they want it to do to designate a location from 140 feet away. I, you know, what we're looking at here isn't the real pictures, it's your drawings, and whether they actually end up being that intrusive, they still meet our lighting standard. And I don't think you'll find this glaring neon sign when it's actually illuminated. It'll probably be turned off at night after 10 o'clock, I would presume, right? So we've got the same standards there we could have on a billboard, and I just don't see that that's going to be a big problem. The, the credit union logo that's shown on the left side of the picture is barely horizontal, it's almost a square logo, and it fits nicely on that space, but still, the letters themselves, because of the arch above, are still small. And I don't think that's going to be the directional indicator for traffic for either this tenant of the building as an owner or other tenants that are leading this for that kind of usage.
Will the sign be turned off at 10 o'clock?
Those standards are for electric signs, billboards, but individual letters or cabinet signs.
So presumably, it would be on all night?
It could be.
The tenants here, they nodded yes when I said that.
They nodded yes when you said it would be turned off at 10 o'clock?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any other questions, council? Oh, Roger, and then Claudia.
Okay. Just looking at that, there's a buffalo, it looks like, quite below that. Will that be retained? Is that another business in there?
Yeah, that's, again, another exception that was made for DA Davidson, and they are just going to stay in the building.
And these, the Lookout letters will be three inches, three and five-eighths inches larger than the ISU letters?
Okay, and I apologize, I'm not staring at the design myself right now.
Okay, it's a, it says here three, three feet even for the ISU large letters, and this says three feet, three and five-eighths inches for the Lookout letters.
So yeah, it looks like the Lookout letters will be three inches and five inches, three and five-eighths inches larger than the ISU letters on the building, that were on the building before.
That were on the building, yes.
Yeah. Claudia?
So, I'm a pro-business kind of girl, and, and I get, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is hideous, both of these are, there's so many ugly signs in town. I think this is tasteful, and if it's going to help the tenants give, tell people, I mean, I've been in, I've worked in buildings where it's impossible to give directions, you have to use other landmarks and, and sometimes even a competitor in order to get people to come to, to know where you're at. It's very, very difficult, so I can appreciate, I think, I think it's tasteful. Three and five-eighths inches per letter is not, it's not like it's ballooning, it's just that there are a lot more, you guys should have named it like a three-letter name. And then, and then we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But, so I make a motion, I, is this a motion?
We're, hold on, hold on, we're in a public hearing here, we're just asking questions.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
So, now, is there any other questions for either one of these? We'll move on, and then I'll entertain a motion for them.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I would look for, oh, I'm sorry, Jim, have we received any written correspondence?
No, we have not.
Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. We would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, then I will, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this is for you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Ortega?
Heidi's got her hand up.
Well...
She's going to suck the wind right out of my motion, I just know it.
I was just hoping that we could address the size and scale a little bit, so I was hoping to make a motion that we, if the applicant agrees to reduce the size, that we could approve this, the sign exception. So I don't know if that's 50% or 75%, so I'm trying to gauge what the council might think on that, but just so that it's not a lot bigger than what the ISU one was, and it's not dominating that whole, you know, for talking about.
Well, it's just that the ISU one is only three letters.
No, but the letters are bigger, too.
Well, but they're only three inches, three and five-eighths inches bigger each letter. It's not, it's not that we went from a four-inch letter to a three-foot letter, it's just that they have a lot more letters in their name.
Okay, well...
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I just want to make that point, that it's not like they're putting up a much bigger, much bigger letters, it's just that they have more letters to put up, so.
Well, the height of the entire sign is more because credit union is underneath instead of to the side. I understand it's because they have fewer letters and that type of thing, but, so I'll just throw it out there then, that if the applicant reduces the size by 50%, that we grant the sign exception.
Okay, we have a motion.
Would you entertain a friendly amendment that, that would say if they would come back with a reduced 50%?
We don't have a second yet.
50% to my mind could be a little drastic for what they're, for what they're trying to accomplish.
Well, that's what you said. Well, that's why I was kind of trying to get a feel.
How about, how about this? Would you be willing to say if the letters were the same size as the ISU letters?
But I think her point is that it also, because it says credit union underneath, the entire vertical distance covered is, is greater by more than just the size of the Lookout letters.
Well, I mean, I, I... I will amend my motion to state that they must reduce the size by 30%.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by President Adamson, and a second by Lurk. The motion is to grant the sign exception with the logo reduced by 30%.
Yep.
Okay, and a second by Lurk. Any discussion on that?
I just have, I just have a comment to make, that, and I can appreciate what you're saying, because I've voiced my opinion about how unsightly there are areas of town are with signage, but I just want to say this. We talk about economic development all the time, all the time. It's like at least once every session, that topic comes up, and I'm a, and I'm one of the people that always brings it up. But given that, if we are going to make it this difficult for somebody to come in and put up a sign on their building that's tasteful, a million times more tasteful than this, or that one that Chris is talking about, then I think we're, we're going to start doing exactly what Teresa McKnight said, which is our process, that it's just, businesses are going to be banging their head against the wall, and they're going to be telling us, pound sand, we'll go to chub it. And that's, and I think that that's going to affect us in the long run. So if we have to revisit the sign ordinance, then I suggest we do that, but I don't think that it's going to help us in, in situations like this. I mean, that's not a distasteful sign. It's not ugly, it's not, it's not gaudy. I just don't see what the issue is, and we are going to start turning businesses away if this is how we deal with it. That's just my spiel.
I have to agree with Claudia.
What?
I know that any of us are graphic designers. There's, you know, this logo, I'm sure it cost them many thousands of dollars to have designed, and it has, it has some proportions that need to stay. You start saying 30% less, you're going to lose the graphic design of what I, Lookout Credit Union is trying to do on this building. And I think, I think we have that problem with a lot of these design things we get into. This group at the HBC are trying to become graphic designers, and it's not their business.
Okay, Linda?
I actually am a graphic designer and have experience in that.
Graphic designer?
Yes. That was my former career. But I don't see that that's actually what we're deciding here. We have a sign code, and what we're, you know, the issue is, you know, we're not supposed to be making decisions based on whether we like something or don't like something. A lot of that is subjective. But I think that, you know, until we, you know, and maybe we do need to revisit the sign code, that's been done a number of times over the last couple of years, and I know it's been a very, very difficult contentious process, but right now, it is the way it is, and that's what we're bound to follow. And so I think when you look at exceptions, and the fact that there is a history of exceptions that have been made, you know, by previous councils to previous owners and previous tenants, shows you the problem you get into when you start making it, except, excuse me, exceptions. So I think that we need to look at, you know, does the sign fit with the code? And, and if the code needs to be revisited, that happens at another time. But does it fit with it now, or is there a very good compelling reason to make an exception? It seems to me in this case, there is some reason to make an exception based on, on visibility and maybe some of the issues of all the exceptions that have been made before that have kind of made this a problem. But going back to our code, the idea of not having it dominate too much is still something that we have said is important in our city, is a priority in our city, and that's what the code was based on. So I think we still need to keep those in mind and not just be making sort of random decisions at different times and ignoring our own rules. We've made other people who come in, you know, follow those rules, and, you know, that, that seems unfair then to suddenly say, well, someone doesn't have to, but someone else does. So if it means revisiting the code, then, then by all means, we can, we can open up that can of worms again, but for now, it's just, the code is what it is, does this sign warrant, you know, an, an exception to that code? And, and maybe it does, but maybe with some compromise on size.
Okay, Council President Adamson?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to your comment about the sign code. I'm more than willing to take a look at the sign ordinance again. I think staff would even agree, there's some things that we could definitely address in the sign ordinance, and in fact, last time, we had it come before us, that was something staff told us, is this is going to have to come back to you again. We only got partway through addressing some of the issues that we needed to address. So I think I'm certainly open to that, and I don't want it to be any more problematic or, you know, difficult for anyone. So my motion is an attempt to, rather than say, sorry, it's got to be the code or nothing, you know, to, to try and say, I mean, when you asked them before, are you open to reducing it by 50%, they were shaking their heads like, yeah, we would be open to that. So I feel like the 30% is a good compromise between the concerns about, you know, neon signage being too big, and the concerns about if you have to rename the building, it's going to be way, way, way smaller than that even. So I felt like that was a good way for us to all come together and help these guys out so they can move forward with something that I hope that they will be happy with and, and will help the resident, or the, you know, commercial tenants in the building and the public be able to find what they need to do.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have a foot in both camps, because I agree that the logo, as logos go, is tasteful and attractive. I wish all the signage in town were as tasteful and attractive. But then I also, you know, sometimes there comes an uncomfortable point when you have to say, do we continue with what we've done in the past? Is it, is it going to continue to serve our community in a, in a, in the big view? Or do we have to begin to say, golly, I mean, there, there are, in Idaho, there are any number of towns where, where businesses have signs and logos, but there are, you know, there are, it has to fit with the, with the mood of the town or the, you know, the ambiance of the town. So it's possible to do that, and we can't do anything about, you know, we're not, obviously not going to expect somebody to tear down a sign that they already have built. But I think we're at one of those uncomfortable moments in time, and you happen, Lookout Credit Union happens to be sitting on that tipping point, when either we continue with this, or we begin to say beautification is important to us, and, and we have to make an uncomfortable decision. So what I hope, very much as Heidi hopes, is that we can come to some accommodation where you don't get all of, you know, what you believe you need legitimately, and yet we be, we maybe can also begin to turn this corner away from some of the things that make our town rather aesthetically unattractive when compared with, with other towns that have been more organized about their signage. So I believe that we also do need to look, and I assume we will, within the comprehensive plan, what do we want to look like in 20 years? And then we begin to head toward that. And I, I think that's what the current code tries to do, I'm just not sure it's where it needs to be. So I'll second Heidi's. Did you ever make a motion?
Yeah, there's a second, there's a second already on that.
All right.
So I think, the council member Bray had a comment, and then Cheetah had a comment.
We've done several sign exceptions before, and sometimes we've, we have struck a compromise by having some of the existing signs vacated, not used, so that a property does not have as much signage on it as if we just throw this one on and keep all the other signs. I don't know what the agreement is, but it seems to me like a landlord, when you assume a, a property, get command of a sign. I know when our church bought property, there was a 64 or 96 square foot thing on our property, and we simply took it down, nobody said a thing. And, and we, we struck a compromise with the city, this was years ago, put up a smaller, conforming sign. Seems like we could work this through some negotiation to not have signs everywhere there, and find a way of, to saying this is a renaming of the, of the building when you put something as prominent on it. And I would, I would just think there's some travel that the owner can do in this regard. It's their property, and it's their negotiation with the tenants, so to speak, and how do you work that all through? It seems to me that perhaps we're trying to deal with just the issue of the ownership and who's getting attention versus the whole composite that we will have to deal with there. So I'm kind of one that says, let's go back to the drawing board and see what comes back to us in terms of a give and take here. There's a vacant sign, can you take it down, for example? And with the directory that's at the front of the building, and perhaps the bigger sign, can people still find their way into that building? You know, if you say there's a big sign at the front, you should come in at the back. That kind of tells people if you're giving directions. And I also think signage is going to go away in terms of identifying a location. Had somebody come to my office today who was using a GPS, they weren't looking at anything. We have a sign that walked past that was very prominent, who we are, and thought we were another address because of GPS. And so I think there's going to be an evolution in this whole system as well, that people will use their phone and the GPS on it and put in an address. So I'm kind of the feeling that we haven't made any headway in terms of knowing where we should be here, you know, telling them arbitrarily to reduce the size of the sign. I'm not for that, because it's hard to know what the graphics will look like without it before us. I, I think there's probably some give and take, you know, if you give up a, a sign on your property, I don't know how big the other one is, but that's, that's a compromised way to, to look at this as well. So I'm for one that says, bring us back another proposal based on everything that's there. You've been, you've had your name taken down when you changed, so, you know, I don't think it'd take a long time to come up with an alternative proposal based on what signage is there.
Okay, Rick?
This is like deja vu all over again. This is where I came into this, council, four years ago, was controversy over signage in the community. But before we vote, we've got two members of the executive team of Lookout Credit Union here. I'm just wondering if one or both of them would like to make any comments about what's been talked about. BJ or Doug?
Mayor, members of the city council, my name's Doug Chambers, and the CEO of Lookout Credit Union. We support whatever decision is. A, a lot of times, so when it comes to following the code, there are things that we could do within the code, that, you know, we own that whole building, it's an entire city block, there's a building face on all four sides, all, all four sides of that road there. We could do some really ugly stuff on that building. We're not interested in it. We're not interested in putting up a, a directory sign, because we think those look ugly. When it comes to our existing tenants, part of purchasing the building is that we inherited a lot of the existing lease agreements. Those are really good tenants for us. DA Davidson's the one we're talking about, these are very good tenants for us. We feel like we're trying to add to the beautification of, of that building and the surrounding area. We are big into that when it comes to our landscaping, when it comes to our city cleanup, when it comes to the things that we want to do to beautify this community. When it comes to economic development, we are very, we, we are that economic development, we are, we are a big part of that. We, we, we employ 50 people in the, in the city of Pocatello, our minimum wage is $13 an hour, after a year, it becomes $14 an hour, that's for an inexperienced person coming in off the street. That's for an inexperienced person coming in off the street. We're looking at putting that at $15 an hour right now. I'm sorry, I'm talking fast because I'm really nervous looking at all of this.
All these masks.
It's the mask, yeah. So when it comes to, you know, sizing and what it looks like, we care about what it looks like, and we care about the size of it. I'm happy to take down on the backside, the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Idaho had that freestanding monument sign. It would, nothing would make me happier because it's a big, ugly, empty sign that's just sitting there on the side of the road. We'd be happy to compromise there, take that down. Can't really do anything about DA Davidson because they're an amazing tenant, and we've got a long-term lease with them. They own the lease that has the monument sign out front and then along the side of the building there. We feel like, you know, size of the letters and all that kind of stuff, Councilman Cheetham is right, that logo has a little bit of detail that we want recognizable, and that's why we want to make sure it's, also, you know, the concept of it being recognizable. Signs may be going away, but a big part of that is marketing. I don't want to rename the building, there's some history there, the Omni Building is part of Pocatello history. We're willing to do that if that's what we're forced to do. I don't want to. Then it becomes this thing of, well, okay, we're, we used to be the Omni Building, and we've got signage on all four things, and we've got this weird thing down here, and it's all these little small signs that don't accomplish what we want to accomplish, which is beautification for our community. Did I miss anything?
Melvin.
All right, thank you.
Council President Adamson.
Yes, so thank you very much for those comments. I just have, I have a couple of statements, but I wanted to ask Councilmember Bray, if we were to amend the motion to include that they would take down the empty sign that was for Blue Cross, would you then feel comfortable proceeding?
I think if we get that sign removed, then it's okay with, this sign is just because of their name and a logo with it. I don't have any problem really with what they're doing, I have a problem with a lot of signage there. And so my compromise would be, take down that one empty sign and go ahead with this. That's where I would come from.
Okay, so that was just a question I had for Councilmember Bray. I wanted to say, there was a comment earlier about making it so you didn't get exactly what you wanted, and I just wanted to say, that is not my intent with this motion at all. It is not to be a jerk to you and make you feel like you're coming away not, you know, happy and that you didn't win, or something like that. That is not my intent at all. And in fact, I want to say thank you so much for being good community partners. I was just out today at the construction combine, and they were seeing your praises and saying how great it was that you had your vehicle there with the music and everything, and they were so grateful and appreciative of your sponsorship of that event as well. So thank you very much for that, and really what I'm trying to do is just help us all come together and move forward so that you can be happy with a nice-looking building and a nice-looking sign, and we can all feel good about it as well. So I will amend my motion to include that they would remove the currently unutilized sign in the back of the property.
And is that rather than reducing?
I think they will also, they will still reduce it by 30%, and they will remove the sign in the back. And I hope everybody can live with that and feel like that's a good way to move forward.
And you want to ask a clarifying question? So me personally, I would rather have one sign on one side of the building than rename the building and have three more signs, you know, in terms of where I'm coming from, from, you know, light pollution. And so it's my understanding that by leaving the monument sign out front that says Omni, that that precludes putting signage on the remaining three sides of the building? Is that correct? Whoever I should be.
So as I understand it, if they rename the building, then they can wrap the building with it if they would like to. They do not want to rename the building, so that Omni sign will stay, and this sign will be on the front of the building, and only the front. They will not have any on the back or the either side.
Right, so, okay, so that precludes them using the other three sides. So for me, that is better than going through the renaming process for whatever that would accomplish and ending up with more neon as a result. So for me, that doesn't seem like something that they're interested in, and it certainly isn't something I'm interested in.
So are you okay with the amendment?
So if we're negotiating a...
I think we're done, I just wanted to make sure.
Motion, well, I want to negotiate a motion too. I think that we shouldn't have them reduce that if they're going to remove a sign. I think that we ought to leave it the same the way it is. I don't think it's obtrusive, and I think that we should show that Lookout Credit Union has done an incredible amount of work in the community, and they continue to, and I think we should highlight a community partner like Lookout Credit Union. That's my two cents. I would love it if somebody would do that. No, I'm not making a motion.
Oh, okay. I was like, can you make a motion?
Everybody else on the council is negotiating a motion. We're not negotiating motions back and forth, and so...
My motion that I have right now then, and we'll see if somebody is okay with the amendment to my motion, is still that they reduce it by 30%, and they remove the unutilized sign in the back, and then we will grant them the exception.
Should we vote?
Oh, we don't have a second on that.
Yeah, you do.
No, she hasn't seconded the amended motion, I don't believe.
That's what she was asking me, is whether I would or not. As long as we're negotiating.
I mean, we negotiate motions like nobody else, I think we're great at it.
Can we change it to?
You can just not second.
Can we change it to 25 or?
Sure. It's 25.
How about 15.7555?
No, it's 25, 25 done.
103.
Second, okay.
Okay, so let me just tell the council what the motion is at this point, is to redo, this is the negotiated amendment to the amended negotiated motion, to reduce the sign by 25%, remove the ugly, unutilized sign in the back of the building.
There, okay, and there's only the one, the Blue Cross?
There's only the one ugly sign, the others are really nice, pretty.
Okay, let us vote.
Other, any of the other comments with none?
Please, no. Don't ask us that.
With that, we will, so we have a motion by President Adamson, and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cheetham?
No.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
I'm curious with the no, so I'm going to go no, looking for another motion.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we allow this sign with the condition that you remove the ugly Blue Cross sign from the back, and we call it good, and that it's on us as a council to revisit the ordinance and then decide if we're even going to have an exception process going forward.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Ortega, and a second by Cheetham. Do we want to negotiate?
So is her motion?
Yes.
That we will revisit the sign ordinance, or is it just?
I think that, I don't think that...
If it is, it shouldn't be.
Okay, well, no, that was just a side question.
The motion, the motion is to approve this sign as presented and remove the ugly, non-used sign with the comment that we would look at the sign code.
Which I think is going to actually probably happen through the comprehensive plan, I don't know, but we need to do it separately.
It won't, the comprehensive plan won't address the sign code.
So we can do that again.
Well, you can put that on an agenda.
Yeah, that's a separate agenda, separate issue and stuff.
And I think it's appropriate that we ask them if they're okay with this motion. You know, I mean, part of negotiating is negotiating with the people who are affected.
That's right.
And I got a thumbs up on this.
So he got a double thumbs up when he asked that. Okay. So we have a new motion. The motion is to allow the exception to the sign code with this as presented, this sign as presented, and they will remove the ugly sign that's unutilized. Wendy, could you please call her on?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
I don't want to say yes to.
And Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Now we will move to Agenda Item 10. Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Decision 123 North Main Street, Dane Simmons Jr., has appealed the Historic Preservation Commission decision denying a certificate of appropriateness for changing materials on a storefront redesign that was previously approved. Materials that were used but not approved include the removal of transom window and use of stucco instead of wood, and the use of incompatible hardware on an original storefront. So this is not a public hearing. No, that's 10 minutes. Okay. You have 10 minutes.
I have 10 minutes. You mind if I move this?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blatt, and the City Council. My name is Dane Simmons. I'm at 123 North Main, and we are talking about a storefront. We already got past the signage, okay? So July 2020, we had a new tenant move in, Pocatello Flooring. They came into a building with just ugly floors, ugly walls. The stipulation was, if they signed a five-year lease, we would gut the building and put a new storefront. So being a repeat offender here, I did everything the right way, so I thought. Shortly after, I reached out to Myers Anderson, and we worked on a design for the storefront. And then we applied on August 5th for application of appropriateness, which was submitted by Letitia Herzog. It got approved during that meeting. In October and September, we went ahead and built out the storefront. We built it out to the design with the exception to a trans room, a trans room above the door. And the reason I didn't go with the trans room was because it didn't match with another door. Above the other original door, there was lead glass, it just didn't make sense to me, so I said, just build a storefront without the trans room. And then the next problem we had was the wood that was supposed to wrap the windows. We had stucco, we had a stucco ceiling, so I felt like it was appropriate to bring the stucco down because it's less maintenance, instead of taking the wood up. So I made a change with the wood and stucco, and I also made a change with the trans room, not knowing that I cannot omit something from the application, I knew I couldn't add anything to it. So after that, I was reported to the city, I got an email from James stating that, you know, I've been reported for not following the directions or whatever we proposed. So I had two choices, and the two choices were, repair the work that has been done, which essentially meant tear it down, or the second choice I had was to reapply to get a new certificate of appropriateness on what I had done. So I reapplied, it was the easier way to go. So I get back in front of the HPC, and the individual that did the design work was on the board, so she had to admit from the decision. So we had six people that could make a decision. It ended up in a tie, three to three, so we went back to discussion. Within that discussion, there was an individual that said, you know, Mr. Simmons, it's not how you did it, it's not what you did, it's how you did it. And she was like, if I just got a simple apology, that would be okay. So I was like, okay, well, I apologize for not knowing that I cannot omit something from the designs, right? Well, Mr. Simmons, you had my vote. Well, that should be four to two at that point, right? So the moderator sent it back to put in a motion in. Nobody sets a motion. Nobody sets a motion. And that's the kind of stuff we deal with in Old Town. That's what we deal with. That's my argument. I got pictures on what it looked like before and what it looks like now. If you're talking about 20 years, what it's going to look like in 20 years, it's going to look a lot better than it did.
Can I see that?
Yes, ma'am. Got to keep my six feet.
Are these identical? No.
Yes, so it's the original storefront, which we then, we received approval to change.
So it used to be this?
That was, that's what it was.
And now it's this?
That's what it is now.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to vote?
So several years ago, before I was seated, I happened to be sitting over there when council was up here, and this is deja vu. You were here, essentially, as you said, with the exact different situation, but essentially the same thing. So being a retired middle school principal, just telling you what character you should now adopt, help me understand why asking first doesn't seem to be an option.
Well, the last situation was a lot different than this one. The last situation, I didn't ask to do anything, I didn't submit an application, so that was a problem with that one.
Right.
This time, I submitted an application, which was approved.
Right.
And so I did exactly what I was supposed to do.
Except you, no, you didn't. You changed material and you removed a structural piece of the building, and my question is...
It's non-structural, to be honest.
Well, but it, I mean, I understand it's not supporting the building, but it is part of the...
Part of the character.
The architecture, okay? So what I can't understand is, knowing from your previous situation and your comment tonight, that you find the historic preservation, you appear to find the Historic Preservation Committee process less than easy somehow, why did you not say, hey, guys, what happens if I just take out this transom?
Well, that's why I hired an individual else on the board, because she was supposed to know the code, right? So, I mean, I don't know why the architect never showed up while we're building it, but that's what happened.
But, so she told you to go ahead and take out the transom?
No, she never told me anything, but it was very personal for her because we, it was her design, that's why I'm here, you know, so...
And so why, that's what I can't understand. Why didn't you just call her and say, hey, is it okay to do this?
Because in the midst of looking at somebody building a trans room, I didn't understand that you couldn't omit or take away from what was already approved. I knew I couldn't go in and put a trans room because it wasn't approved, but under what I knew in that moment, that's what I knew.
And that's what I can't understand.
Why can't you understand that?
Why not be safe and just ask? I mean, why not just, if you're not 100% sure that you can, why not just ask? That's the part I don't understand. If I don't know something, and I'm having my house remodeled, if I'm not sure about something, I ask the builder, I say, okay, you know, if, am I understanding this? Because I want to be sure.
Fair enough.
Because I'm spending money. And that's the, what is escaping me is, why, when you're spending money, are you not simply asking questions so that you're very, very safe rather than sorry?
Is there someone here from the Historical Preservation Committee?
No.
No?
We've got our city representation, Jim.
No, that's all right. I have a comment. So, Mr. Simmons, I really appreciate what you're doing down there.
Thank you.
I know you've got a lot of skin in the game, and you and your partners are doing a lot of good things down there. Personally, I prefer the storefront the way it is to what it was. That being said, while I'm inclined to grant this, I really, 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 really don't want you walking out of here thinking that just because you're investing money that you can make up the rules. So I just want... So I, I just want that to be really, really clear, that while I, I appreciate what you're doing down there, I really, really do. I think you're doing amazing things. I just, I just, you know, if the Historic Preservation Committee is a shit show, then that needs to be addressed with them, and somehow that, that needs to be remedied. I don't know how, but I, I just don't want you thinking that because you're investing money and I'm, and I approve this, that I'm giving you license to buy another building and, and do whatever it is that you think is okay, because like she said, if that's who you have to deal with, that's who you have to deal with. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
Linda?
I agree with part of that. Really shocking, but...
Wow, that's twice in one night from that side of the room. Come on, Heidi.
The part, the part I agree with is I very much appreciate what you're doing downtown and...
Thank you.
And all the revitalization and everything, and we don't in any way want to discourage that. And I think neither does the Historic Preservation Committee. So that's the part where I'm not going to agree. I, I think, I mean, I value historic preservation. I think there's a reason for it, and, and there are rules, and there's a process. There seems to be problems, you know, with you following that process. So maybe that's where we need to, to work things out and, and figure out how to make that go better on, on both sides, you know, your side and as well as the, the commission and have staff, you know, you can always call our staff and ask them those questions because, you know, we focused on the transom, but there's also the issue of the material, the stucco. So the transom was something you took away from the plan that was approved, but the material was something you changed from the plan that was approved. So that was another decision that was just sort of made on the fly that didn't fit with what you had had approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. So my feeling is that nobody is trying to make, trying to make this difficult or trying to discourage you. I mean, I, I feel like I can honestly say that that's not, I mean, it's not my goal. I don't think that's the council's goal. I don't think that's the historic, historic preservation's goal or our staff's goal. We love what you're doing. We want to encourage what you're doing and support what you're doing, but we do have rules and have to follow those rules. So I, you know, would agree that, you know, we don't want you going the way, we want you to know that we approve what you're doing, but not go away from here thinking, you know, I mean, I don't know yet what's going to be decided, but I, I wouldn't want to send the message that you get to dictate the rules. These are rules that everyone else has to follow, so it's, it's not fair to other people in the community that are also investing and also doing things that, that they do it the right way, but you don't have to. So I think we need to make that clear and just figure out a way to, to maybe work with each other a little bit better and communicate a little bit better and, you know, and, and also have you know that we, we do very much appreciate what you're doing for this city and the investment you're making, so...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick?
You know, when I read the minutes, this failed at the Historic Preservation Commission on a three to three vote with one member abstaining because of her prior involvement with you. And it appears to me that if she had not, had not been involved, this would even be in front of us tonight because she would have approved it and it would have gone down four to three. So I'd make a motion that we approve this, this appeal.
Second.
We have a motion from Chitam and a second by Ortega.
I need to ask Kim a question. Have you, do you feel sufficiently abused enough here to...
Not at all. No, I mean, one thing, my communication can't get better. I will say that I'm getting better at working. I mean, this is all new to me.
Right.
You know, and so I got better from the first building to the second building. We're on our fourth building now, and so I'm, I'm making strides in the right direction. And so, and I think the historic department, they, they know that. And so I think it was a very, this specific situation was a very emotional situation because of who was involved, and so it was a lot of subjection in this particular situation. However, I do take your feedback seriously, and I will communicate with James and everybody else in the future of anything else, any facade changes or anything else in the future, I'll go ahead and make sure I make a conservative effort.
And know that we're not trying to abuse you.
I don't feel abused. I kind of enjoy it. It's nice not seeing you guys on the computer screen, you know?
Yes, this is...
I can take it. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Chitam and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Chitam?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Super. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Two-minute break.
We are going to take a two-minute break, so we'll be back in a few minutes.
Two.
Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue on with Agenda Item Number 11.
I know.
Final Platte subdivision Cheyenne Crossing. Council may wish to consider a request by Ron Dykman and Robert and Rhonda Monde, represented by Harper-Levitt Engineering Incorporated, for the, a final plat application to subdivide 3.77 acres, more or less, into 22 lots. The proposed subdivision is located south of Cheyenne Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Council President Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the application with the conditions noted.
Second.
We have a motion, I, I don't know who got the second. Ortega, I think you got it. We got a motion by President Adamson and a second by Ortega. They're going to start firing him at me here, so... Got to get on my toes here. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 12, Final Platte subdivision Grant Street Landing. Council may wish to consider a request by Mega Marketing LLC and J.A.R. Investments LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, for a final plat application to subdivide 9.21 acres, more or less, into seven lots. The proposed subdivision is located northwest of Hawke Street and west of Bannock Highway. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the application with the conditions noted.
Second.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lorik. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Bus donation acceptance from Filer Senior Center Transit Department. Council may wish to accept staff recommendations and approve acceptance of a donation of one 2008 Ford Starcraft Cutaway bus from the Filer Senior Center, subject to legal department review. Staff anticipates the equipment to be utilized for a minimum of five years. If approved, the bus would be used for system-wide fixed route and door-to-door service. There are no additional requirements for acceptance of a donation. Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the staff recommendations to receive this bus, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 14, Bid Contract Bullock Street to Flandreau Drive Waterline Addition, Addition Project. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Bullock Street to Flandreau Drive Waterline Addition Project. A, accept the low responsive bid received on March 9, 2021, from Idaho Materials and Construction for the total bid amount of $315,315, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the, authorize an agreement between the City of Pocatello and Idaho Material, Materials and Construction in the amount of $315,315 for the Bullock Street to Flandreau Drive Waterline Addition Project and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The project includes installation of new waterline between Bullock Street and Flandreau Drive for improving distribution, network circulation, and service redundancy. Work will be, will be in April, will begin in April 2021 and is scheduled for completion in July 2021. Funding is available in the Water Department budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Stevens?
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 14 and authorize any necessary signatures.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. We have a comment by...
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if there were other bids. Didn't see that in the packet.
Mayor, Council, Skylar Allen, City Utility Engineer. We did receive seven bids for this project. Idaho Materials and Construction was the low bidder, and they were deemed responsive.
How much lower were they?
The high bid was nearly double, the, over double the amount of the low bid. There was a pretty good range. The, the first three were between 300 and 400,000, and then the, the top two were well, well above that.
Are you satisfied that this won't result in a bunch of change orders?
There's always a risk of change orders. This project has some particular challenges to it, one being we are crossing the railroad spur, so there's a potential for change orders, but we, we hope to not have significant change orders on the project.
Thank you.
Those, those bids are summarized on the technical memorandum. All, all seven of those bids are listed there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 15, Bid Contract Co-Generation Electrical System Upgrade Water Pollution Control. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff, accept a low responsive bid from Hunt Electric Incorporated for the total bid amount of $51,276.50 to upgrade a co-generation electric system, and if approved, authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the upgrade are available in the WPC fiscal year 2021 budget. Councilwoman, or President Adamson?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the bid. Is that winding Agenda Item Number 15?
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Chitam.
I have the same question. There was a wide range in these bids. Are we confident, Levi, that we won't have a bunch of change orders that'll drive the price up?
Oh, we are. I think it was more of the other contractors were extremely busy, and we had to almost beg them to come give us both. The $50 is way closer to what we thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Chitam. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 16, Resolution State and Local Agreement for Center Street Underpass Project, Idaho Transportation Department. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and authorize the mayor's signature on agreement between, on an agreement between the Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Pocatello for the estimated share of construction costs associated with the Center Street Underpass Project, subject to legal department review. The amount of the agreement is $307,404, which is in the city's estimated share of the cost of, for construction and is available in Fund 70. Councilwoman Lorik?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 16 and adopt a resolution and authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement between the Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Pocatello for the estimated share of construction costs associated with the Center Street Underpass as laid out in this item.
We have a motion by Lorik and a second by Stevens. Roger?
I'm going to vote for this because I think it's so important to get this going, but I don't want to have us lose sight of the fact that that parking lot has been proposed for well over, probably 12 or 14 years. It should be an accompanying project with this. While it's all tore up, we should be doing this. We need to figure out how to do it, and so I just want to keep that on the table because it's so important if we're going to make it more conducive for people to travel there, we got to give them someplace to park as well.
Councilwoman Stevens?
I, I want to reinforce that. I, I mean, we talked a lot about supporting Old Town or historic downtown Pocatello, and I'm really looking forward to seeing some substantive moves that, that put legs under that rhetoric.
Okay, so we have a motion by Lorik and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 17, Resolution State and Local Agreement for Hawthorne and Quinn Intersection Project, Idaho Transportation Department. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement between Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Pocatello for an S, for the estimated share of construction costs associated with Hawthorne and Quinn Intersection Project, subject to legal department review. The amount of the agreement is $227,291, which is the city's estimated share of the cost for construction and is available in Fund 70. Councilwoman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 17, a resolution for state and local agreement for the Hawthorne and Quinn Intersection Project, and that we review this through the legal department.
Second.
So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chitam?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Agenda Item 18.
I have a question to follow.
Okay, we've got a question.
When will this project start? The other one we had a kind of a kickoff time, but this one does not indicate, at least right here in this. And I've read so many materials, it might be in the material.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director. Thank you for this opportunity. So what we're doing right now is we're, we're trying to apply for some stimulus money, and, and if we, we're hoping to hear in May whether or not we get that stimulus money. If so, it'll, it'll probably kick off this year, this fall. If not, it's currently scheduled for 23, 24 timeframe. So...
Yeah.
So just to be clear, this is not a guarantee. We're voting on something that if the Idaho Department of Transportation Department does not give us any of the stimulus money, we are not, we, there's no agreement for us to enter into.
So, so the stipulation is that we do not have to pay our match money until the money is made available from Idaho Transportation Department. So we're, we're trying to get it now to expedite the project. It may end up being two more years before we get the money, but this, this kind of puts everything in place so that when we get the money, we can do the project.
And I, I wanted to hear that because I know we're going to get phone calls from people in this area that says, why aren't you starting tomorrow? And I just want them to know that this is contingent. We're trying to speed it up.
And I have a follow-up question. I think I read that the governor is looking to find some infrastructure monies as well. Will that come to stuff like this, or...
It's very, very possible. I think there's like $2 million, $2 trillion that they're, they're putting towards infrastructure funding. We're not exactly sure how this is going to come down, but there's a good possibility.
Okay, but I meant the governor was doing some sort of bond or something in the state for...
He wants to.
He's proposing it.
Yeah, it's proposed.[1686.87] that that they've not done. I don't know if it would trickle down to this level of a, a project, but it might.
Sure.
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible, not as one of your five slides, but would it be possible maybe during budgeting to just have like a bulleted list of, that over the next five years, like what, what kinds of infrastructure projects, you know, collectively Public Works is looking at, just to help me organize my head around, you know, what might be coming down the pike?
So it's kind of off topic, but you know, I can coordinate with Jim and we can kind of come up with some kind of a plan. Really, it's kind of individualized towards each department, you know, water has their capital improvements.
And that'd be fine too.
And this is more.
I'm just trying to get a handle on, you know.
Why don't, why don't we work on that? Why don't, we'll figure out a way and work on that. We won't include that in the five slides, but we'll get a, a thing out to the council so that they can see a spreadsheet of projects over the next five years.
That'd be great. That would just help me understand.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, let's do something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. I don't think we've, have we done it? We voted already, all right.
I just had to clarify.
Hello, welcome. All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 18 then. Idaho Office of Emergency Management 2020 State Homeland Security Program, SHSP, grant application, Fire Department. Council may wish to approve submission of the following Idaho Office of Emergency Management grant application and if awarded, approve acceptance and authorize a mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. A, SHSP, funding for Regional Response Team Six Hazardous Material in the amount of $20,000. This grant authorizes the Idaho Office of Emergency Management and obligate, to obligate and expand 2020 State Homeland Security Program funds for allowable equipment purchases and training program execution. On behalf of the sub, of the sub recipient, there is no local match. And B, SHSP, funding for the Idaho Technical Risk Rescue Team 3A Technical Rescue in the amount of $7,000. The grant authorizes the Idaho Office of Emergency Management to obligate and expand 2020 State Homeland Security Program funds for allowable equipment purchases and training program execution. On behalf of the sub recipient, there is no local match. I was having a hard time with that. Council, Stevens?
I move that we accept Agenda Item Number 18 as written, including legal review and signatures on all pertinent.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. We have a question by?
When I read this, it's really vague to me exactly what we're approving. Are we approving training, equipment, both? Exactly what are we getting into?
So if you, Bray, if you'd come over there, please. Should have made Levi do that, but I'm afraid of Levi.
I would just try and follow, see if Levi's about. He has a rule.
Mayor and Council, Ryan Hearn, Assistant Chief of Operations, Pocatello Fire. We've been participating in these grant programs for about 15 years. $20,000 for hazardous materials, about half, half of that is dedicated to training, half of it to equipment. $7,000 in technical rescue, again, half to equipment, half to training. Most of these are items that we identify and then the Office of Homeland Security will either pay the bill or obtain the item for us, so.
And the materials consumables or are they permanent?
They can be both. You know, for example, a detection device or possibly blades or something that's consumable.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Stevens and a sec by Ortega. I'm confident we haven't voted on this yet. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lurk?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 19, sole source declaration of latex emulsion purchase. Council may wish to accept recommendations of the street operations staff and approve the purchase of GSB-88 two-to-one plus latex emulsion from Asphalt Systems Incorporated to be a valid sole source expenditure for the city's 2021 summer paving program and authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the purchase. The product is trademarked material that no other company makes, therefore it is impractical or impossible to obtain through bids. The amount requested is approximately, is approximately 125 tons for the estimated total purchase price of $108,600 FOB Salt Lake City, Utah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item 19 as written.
Second. We have a motion by Ortega and a second by Bray. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lurk?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 20, piggyback bid acceptance for Micro Surfacing Services, Street Operations Department. Council may wish to consider piggybacking the 2019, 2020 City of Pocatello contract with Valley Slurry Seal for 2021 Micro Surfacing Services in the approx, in the approximate amount of $599,500, which has been budgeted in the Street Operations fiscal year 2021 budget. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents related to the purchase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept Item Number 20. Agenda Item Number 20 is written, including all appropriate signatures.
Second. We have a motion by Stevens and a quiet second by Ortega.
Losing steam.
She's losing steam here. But I still heard it though, I want you to know, so. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lurk?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 21, piggyback bid acceptance for Asphalt and Aggregates, Street Operations Water Department. Council may wish to consider piggybacking the 2020 City of Pocatello contract with Nicholson Construction for Hot Mix Asphalt. And I think it's hot night here, right? Hot Mix Asphalt and Assorted Aggregates in the approximate amount of $416,060, which has been budgeted in the Street Operations and Water Department fiscal year 2021 budgets. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all appropriate documents related to the purchase. Councilwoman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 21, the piggyback bid acceptance and that we authorize your signature on all appropriate documents.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Lurk?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
So I just might right here add and just let the council know that our, our Street Operations Superintendent, our Deputy Public Works Director really got aggressive and got these prices locked down early before any of the things happened later. And so we got a heck of a deal on this product. So a big thank you to Tom for that. Thank you. Saved the city a lot of money. All right, Agenda Item 22, council discussion, discussion regarding ordinance number 3061 face coverings. This time has been set aside for council to revisit ordinance number 3061, an ordinance establishing standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places as approved by the council November 19, 2020, effective November 21, 2020. Roger?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we keep the mask ordinance in place and should the infection rate drop to less than 15 per 10,000 people for 14 consecutive days before May 6th, that we meet in a special session to consider rescinding the existing ordinance.
Second. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Now just a minute, I want to get this so. Bray, your motion is to keep it with a triggering point of 15?
Less than 15.
Less than?
15 per 10,000.
Per 10,000.
For 14 consecutive days. I'm just using some of the health standards that the districts.
For 14 days.
Put in place and saying, let's just follow what the health districts have designed.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor, you know, we're currently, Madison County currently, when I look this afternoon, we're in the minimal risk category according to Southeast Idaho Public Health. We've got 136 active cases when I look this afternoon out of 85,000 residents, which puts us at .16 percent, 16 hundredths of 1 percent of those active cases, which puts us at 15.5 cases per 10,000 persons. We're one-half of one case away from the stipulation that Roger just made. There've been no new hospitalizations in all of Southeast Idaho since Monday. This thing has wowed its way down. We've got a vaccine surplus forecast right now. People are be, starting Monday, virtually anyone could get a vaccine and within two weeks will be supposedly immune to this. It'll take two weeks until the ordinance takes effect anyway. And I have to vote against Roger's motion. I think it's time to do something now.
Okay?
I just wanted to clarify one thing about the vaccination. It's two weeks after you have your second one.
That's right.
So that process then, you know, with the first one and the second one, you're looking at?
Johnson and Johnson.
Yeah, which most in our area or not, but that means five weeks at least, maybe six. So it's, it's two weeks after the, the last one. I did want to just say, I mean, I think we've said everything already in our previous discussions, but just reading the emails that we've received in the last couple of days right up to this meeting, I, I want to say a couple of things in response to some of the points that have been made in these emails. The first thing I want to say is that I, and I'm just going to speak for myself, but I, I think probably most people on the council are in the same boat, that we do read all the emails. There's a lot of people that say that we're not reading or listening to them. And I just want to make the point again that reading and listening are not the same as agreeing. I may on any given issue reach a different conclusion, you know, than you have, but it doesn't mean that I'm not listening to you or not reading your emails. So please know that I believe all of us are, are listening to all the people in the community that take the time to, to write us or call us or call the city. We, we do hear you. The other thing I wanted to say is about the numbers and the data. We're also receiving a lot of emails and everybody's quoting different numbers and different data and different studies and, I mean, our, my head is spinning at this point as far as the numbers, but just what has the most influence with me is I'm watching our daily updates from our Southeast Idaho Public Health and looking at the numbers. And then I'm also talking to medical professionals and people from the Portnoy Medical Center and looking at their data. And apparently I was talking to a doctor this week and medical professionals in our community are sent data from the hospital that, that we in the public and even us on the council, as well as the media, are not given. And the numbers that he shared with me as far as the hospitalizations, ICU, people on ventilators, people admitted to ICU, people admitted to the hospital with COVID, those numbers have gone up in the last week. So, you know, when you hear the data from these professionals for our area specifically, the numbers in the last week have not been good. That is concerning to me. A lot of people want to say that those numbers have gone way down and, and they were on a downward trend, but now that's kind of changed again. And then you got to think with Easter coming this weekend and we had spring break last week, you know, every time there's something like that, then we get another surge. So we still don't know what the effects of those are going to be. Another point I wanted to talk about is the idea of fear. People keep saying that anybody who wears a mask or votes for a mask ordinance is just operating out of fear. You know, and I, I think the idea of not having fear at all is, is an impossibility. No, no human being has no fear. I mean, that's an innate response. But I would say that I am not governed by my fear of this virus. I am not making decisions based on fear. I do go shopping, I do go, you know, to meetings, I do go to restaurants. I'm not living at home in the dark with my windows closed or, you know, so I don't feel that I'm governed by fear. But I don't think that it's an all or nothing proposition that, you know, you either are totally afraid and, you know, can't do anything or that, you know, you just say everything's fine and I'm going to live my life and not take any measures. This is a matter of just being sensible and looking at some of the little things we can do to, and then nobody's saying that masks are 100 percent, you know, solution or that they're going to stop the virus or that they're going to make it go away. I don't think any of those things are going to happen, but there are small things we can do that can slow the spread of the virus. And I don't see why we wouldn't do things that we can do to protect our community and slow the spread. So I would say in terms of the idea of fear and freedom, you know, those kinds of things, I feel like the mask gives me more freedom. It's not taking it away. It's the thing that allows our businesses to stay open. It's the thing that allows me to go to the grocery store and not feel that I'm really putting myself in a, at a huge risk. So I don't feel that I am governed by fear and that that's where my decision is coming from. The other thing a lot of people mentioned is the idea of personal responsibility and let people make their own choices based on personal responsibility. I'm all for, for that, but I guess maybe I define personal responsibility a little bit differently than some people do. To me, personal responsibility isn't just saying that you only take care of yourself or that you only care about yourself. Personal responsibility is, is taking responsibility for doing what you can, you know, to help others and to help the community. It's being responsible to your, to your neighbors and your loved ones and that kind of thing. So it, it isn't just about that you get to make your decisions. Because the decisions you make for yourself, I mean, if it's something that doesn't affect anyone else, that's totally fine. But if it does affect other people, then there's an issue. Many people sent us, I believe it's from the Declaration of Independence or, I can't remember exactly where it's from, but the idea that, you know, the, the part about the inalienable rights and that you have the right to life and liberty and pursuit of happiness and all of those things. And I absolutely agree with that. We all do and we have that. But the second part, the last part of that quote was as long as those rights don't infringe on anyone else's rights. And that to me is the key part of that. If what you're doing maybe harms someone else, then that's where it becomes complicated and it isn't just about, you know, that you get to make a decision for yourself. You have to look at what effect that has on other people. So masks, the idea here is that if more people wear them and we're slowing down the spread, then that is, you know, taking care of everybody's rights and making sure that what we're doing isn't harming someone else. The last thing I want to say, and I'm sorry, but I just felt I needed to address all these things that I'm reading about, is the idea of authority and Idaho law and whether we have the authority to even pass an ordinance like this. And many people feel that we don't. But, and I've said this before, the first thing I did when we were even considering this was contact our city attorney and make sure that we actually do have the authority and where in Idaho code does it say that? And he gave me the passages in Idaho code where it does say that. And so to me, there's not a question of whether we have the right to do this. I think we not only have the right, we have an obligation. This is a different kind of law. It's not a permanent law. There are many laws that are about public safety that we follow all the time and nobody questions them. That's what you do in civilized society. But I think this is a temporary law dealing with, you know, a unique situation, a public health emergency. And there is provision for that in Idaho law. So I think we are doing this. I don't think it is about, as some people said, it's just about control, that we're trying to control people's lives. I don't feel that that's where I'm coming from at all. I feel like it's about compassion and making sure that we're taking care of our, our friends and our neighbors and our loved ones and doing, you know, a little thing that we can do to, to help protect people. So the last thing I will say is there are exceptions in the ordinance. The ordinance itself is not that restrictive. If there are people that can't wear them for, you know, health reasons or, there are exceptions to that. So I don't feel that it is a real hardship. I think it is just about trying to take care of each other and it's about doing the best we can during a very difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Chris?
Yeah, just quickly. For me, even though I voted yes consistently, this has always been a vote that brings two of my core values into conflict. The first core value is that I don't have any particular interest in anybody else and/or the government telling me what I can and can't do medically with my body. And I have no interest in telling any other human being what they can or can't do medically with their body. That's a core value that I hold dear. The second core value that I hold dear is that I believe that we do better as a community than we do as trying to be isolated, totally self-contained individuals. And I don't mean we're sticking our noses into everybody else's business, but I do believe that there are things that we human beings gain from being part of a community that gives and takes in order to... that gives and takes in order to achieve the best we can achieve as a group. So, those two values have really been in conflict for me every time this vote comes up. The second thing is that I rarely feel privileged by being as old as I am, but I did feel, I did understand the fact that I was privileged to be one of the people who could get vaccinated early. And I noticed how easy it was for me to forget that simply because I now feel immune, that there are people younger than I am who were not enjoying that same privilege, not of just feeling immune, but of being immune. And I feel compelled to give those who are younger than I am the opportunity to gain the immunity that I now have. And that started, I believe, today, was the first day that all...
Anybody over 16?
Yeah.
It started Mondays.
Who wants to be vaccinated can be.
Oh, no, they moved it up yesterday, sorry.
Oh, yesterday, all right. Anyway, very recently. And so, I want those people to gain the immunity that they are seeking. And at that point, I will feel much more comfortable saying, if you don't want to be vaccinated, if you don't want to wear a mask, that's your choice, and that's where that core value of I have no desire to either be told or tell what can and can't be done medically with an, you know, to an individual or by an individual. So, for me, my yes vote, what I like about Roger's motion is that it says yes, which gives an opportunity for those who are just now able to get vaccinated to get vaccinated and gain immunity, and at the same time, it allows for the possibility of revisiting this, should we reach what SIF has designated as a, what, a sort of a very low-risk, low transmission...
It's not SIF, it's Eastern Idaho Health District.
Oh, Eastern Idaho.
SIF didn't have the guts to do anything.
All right. But so, that's why I, that's why I like Roger's motion, is that it comes as close to accomplishing two things that I value as I can think of.
Okay, any other comments?
I'll just make a comment. I find it real ironic that we have several of the counties around us who are progressing up. Some are nudging down, but there are five of the counties in our health district that have much higher rates than us, which is an anomaly when you consider that it is spread primarily in close conjunction with each other. So, here we have one of the most populated areas, it's safer than a lot of the rural areas. We also just got out of a, Eastern Idaho being a hotspot in the nation with Idaho Falls and Rexburg and stuff like that. I think that we need to just hold our serve. We're real close, and if we can hold our serve on through this set, we're going to win the match. And so, I really think that this allows us the objective analysis that the Eastern Idaho Health District put forth and that the Southern, Southeast, Southeastern Idaho Health District tried to emulate, but our health board would not pass. And by the way, our health board prematurely put us into a thing by their vote, but not by the standards that are published, because we're at 136 infection rate. To get into the minimal category, their status says you got to be 88 or lower. So, they arbitrarily did something that I don't think they should have done. So, I just think this continue, this hold serve, and this give allowance for the sake that we're real close to emerging from this. I've heard several merchants, retail people, who say they're willing to suck it up and go for a while longer because it gives freedom and it gives opportunity to beat this.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? Okay, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Chita?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then that motion will stand. If we run into less than 15 per 10,000 for 14 consecutive days, we will have a call in a special meeting in order to address that. With that motion, what does that do to the ordinance?
The ordinance still needs to be considered because it's on the agenda because of the motion that was made at the last meeting.
Okay. So, Agenda Item 23, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 3061, establishing standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that Agenda Item Number 23 be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication if it passes.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Okay. No.
Chita, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
This is for the reading.
This is for the reading of the ordinance.
Yes, okay.
Councilmember Bray made the motion, and Councilmember Ortega seconded that motion.
I was one step farther.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
And I might just say the same thing I said to me, to Bray, welcome to the meeting. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
With Stevens.
Speed reading.
As much as I always do them. An ordinance of the City of Polk-Tel, a municipal corporation of Idaho, repealing ordinance number 3061, which establishes standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places, including penalties for violations, providing an effective date from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Chita?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Thank you, and we will go from there. Let me see, the audience, Agenda Item 24 is items from the audience. We have nobody that has signed up for that, so thank you very much. This has been a long meeting. Thank you, council, for what you've done. With that, we are adjourned.